We just.
You had to interrupt there.
Rule call.
Jenny David, Frank Scott, Ron Vaughn, Brad Newbecker, Mark Serber.
All right, first two public comments, anything on the agenda? Do we have any public comment in the room? We have any public comment on Zoom? All right, starting to three A, first appointment is Penny Pea.
Hey.
Economic Development Corporation Director for the EDC with an update. Would you like to go out?
I enjoy her.
Yes, absolutely. We were just seeing the EDC at the West.
Or don't worry about that wire hook.
Thank you. Well, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present to you. My name is Phil Durst. I am the president, current president of the board of the Oklahoma County Economic Development Corporation. Penny Pea is our director and we've got to be with you. First, let me just also say that we are very glad to support the county commissioners, the county for EDC. This is a big dinner for us and we appreciate that very much. So thank you very much for your support. What we want to do is share with you just a few things at a glance from this year, 2022. So Penny and I are going to tag team on this and she's going to start.
Well, the EDC has been up to a lot this year, but some of the highlights for this year in no particular order was that we brought the lieutenant governor here for a couple of for a few hours one day and we held him captive down at Michigan Works and invited people to come in and listen to what he had to say and to also share with him information about Ogama County. Then we took him for a tour, Heather with the Chamber of Commerce, and I took him for a tour around the county. And he wanted to check in on some of the businesses that we had and I was surprised in his choices, but he had a good time while he was here. I think he was late for his next appointment because he was really having a good time.
That was fun that day. Are you guys going to do that again?
We're hoping, yeah.
I thought, I felt like, because Karen and I went.
Yeah.
I, I found it really interesting.
Yeah.
What seemed to be the most unusual choice.
For, for, he stayed.
All of them?
Yeah, yeah, he stayed downtown. He went to Silver Lining and
The brewery.
Yeah, he, he was really wanting to get to the brewery and he couldn't have lunch there, so he couldn't wait to come back so he could have lunch. But yeah.
Going to the glass slipper too.
Yes, yes. Down to the park so he could wander around the park. And he was really, really excited about the way that was laid out and some of the things that had been done down there. And he also, we drove him through into the industry area. Yeah, we, we squeezed as much as we could in the short amount of time we had. Yeah, but it was good.
Good.
Something else that we are working on is we recognize that childcare is a barrier for working parents. And so I'm working with the TriShow program. Are you guys familiar with TriShow? No. Okay, so TriShow is, was started out as a pilot program. Daycare just can't be like it used to be, right? So you pay the neighbor girl to watch your kids or you have a, you know, someone that you pay three or four dollars to watch your children. That's kind of the way of the past. And so TriShow is a program where businesses can participate. And if the families qualify, the families pay a third, the state, the state pays a third. But then the business that their employer pays a third. And that's kind of potentially how things are going to be looked at going forward. There's a secondary CDC program that's set up kind of the same way. We are working, the EDC is working with local partners on three grants. We've received one of them. It's an apprenticeship type grant that focuses on helping daycare providers get the staff that they need and get them trained. So we're, we've partnered with IASCO, Aaronak, Claire, Vladwin, Ross Common and Ogama as part of that and we've received it. I wrote a grant for strictly Ogama County that will help us do, it's not about funding, it's about pulling the community together to figure out exactly how we can approach this amongst ourselves and see what kind of resources we already have and what we can do about it. And then we were asked to partner on a secondary grant that has some funding with, on a regional basis with Alcona, Aaronak, Ogama and IASCO. And so that would come with right around $250,000. So we're waiting to see how that one comes around too.
Now, you see, the, the, the businesses would also contribute to that.
For TriShow, yeah.
What, what type of businesses would even be partnering with, with something like that? Would they have to be asked to be included?
A business can participate whenever they would like. It, all businesses qualify, it's the parent, but they then have to, they have to qualify according to what their wages are for that particular program.
We had our annual economic outlook breakfast in October. The Calic Breakfast is where we invite business leaders, community leaders in, and we talk about some business things. We had the Michigan Director of Rural Development in for that as a guest speaker. Sarah. Sarah Lucas, sorry, look, Sarah Lucas, and she'd only been on the job less than a year at that point. In fact, her office was, was her at that point and she was just in the process of putting out to hire three people to be in her office, but it was a great opportunity to, to share with her the needs in the county as, as we see things that are, that could help economic development in our county. And also to hear from her about potential opportunities that there may be for funding for things. You know, I, I really believe in the, in the impact of personal relationships, especially when we're talking about, you know, the tenant governor, the director of the Department of Rural Development. I think it's important that they be able to connect a place with, with a name that says Oklahoma County Economic Development, that they be able to connect and say, yeah, I've been there. I understand that place. I, I know the people there. I've met the people there. And so it's important as we reach out to to influential people that we establish these relationships and also that we give access to them, to the business people in our county.
The nice thing about that particular activity is we've kind of created a relationship with Sarah Lucas. So now whenever there is something, something going on, she'll say, Penny, do you want to go with, there's something really exciting you want to listen? So she's kind of taking us along on her journey. The next thing we have on the list is the Business Expo. We went to the Chamber of Commerce Annual Expo and we were able to hand out information about our revolving loan fund and anything that the EDC can do to help the businesses in the county with anything that they may, may be looking at, whether it's an expansion product, project, but they're just, they're just looking for grants or advice or whatever it could be. We're here to help them and we let them know.
We sponsored a educational session and discussion session on ARPA for township officials. Knowing that township officials had many questions about ARPA and we had two people from MSU Extension in to, to share with information about ARPA, what kind of projects they could, they could that were eligible, how they could work together on projects. And so we had, we had two, two sessions, excuse me, two sessions, one morning, one evening, the same day. It was both live and Zoom at the same time. Tim Dolahanny was, was at a session. And so people could join in by Zoom or live first thing in the morning or right after work in, in the evening. And through that, we had a number of people take part in those sessions from townships. So we, we believe that was very beneficial. And then Penny's mentioned the revolving loan fund. We, we keep working to, to develop that. This is a loan fund for small business in the county. And we love businesses to be all part of that in order to, whether it's to modernize, to grow, to, to purchase something that may be a new line for them, that, that they can take out a loan with us, that a low interest rate, that they could eventually employ more people.
We're also, this year I have been working on developing a community collaborative. I had put out a lot of feelers to find out what was going on as post COVID with everybody meeting and everything, and I wasn't getting a lot of feedback. So I started working on pulling together a community collaborative similar to one I had worked with in the past. And after we called the meeting, we had somebody at our meeting kind of raised their hand and go, okay, we have a Healthy Human Services Collaborative that already meets. And I'm like, okay, that's kind of information I was looking for earlier. Tell me about you. And it, they, it's a sharing body. It's not a doing body. And so they said that they were looking for partners that were willing to do some of the work. Once they identified the work that needed to happen, how could we, how can we get it done? So once we get to the end of the year, we're going to be working with them and everybody that came. The West Branch City Manager was there. We had, I think Tim Dolahanny was there. There were several, there were several people there that want to be part of that subcommittee of that collaborative in order to be the working body. So I'm looking forward to getting into January and getting more of that going.
We have begun a conversation and I, I don't want to, to, I want to make sure that we don't step on toes in this, but we understand that the township association is not meeting together and there's reasons that, that it's beneficial to, to, we believe that there's reasons that it's beneficial for them to meet together. And in fact, we've heard from individuals that they believe that it would benefit them to work together. So we've simply begun a conversation to say, hey, can we help? Can the EDC help to pull this together? And maybe not on a monthly basis, maybe it's quarterly basis, but can we play a role to facilitate that to to enable that to, to go along so that it doesn't just languish? Because frankly, we think there's too much good that comes out of that for it to languish. So again, we're trying to be careful that we, that we don't overstep our bounds. We're simply offering ourselves to help if, if that would be, if that would be agreeable to them. So we've, we've started some conversations. That's where we're at with that.
Phil, if I could interject, I think both the commissioners have been encouraging their scholarships to start getting back to the MTA meetings. Well, I know I have, I think all of us have, because it's, it's something that I think really needs to be done. You know, Mike Bowers, Emergency Management Committee, he wants to take and, you know, do some presentations for the townships and stuff, so.
But he doesn't want to go to all the counties.
It's impossible. It's impossible for him to do that.
Yeah.
So if they could, you know, at least meet quarterly, like you said, and I, again, I'm sure that all the commissioners here have, but I know I've been on mine about it, so.
Well, then that's kind of what we said. You may not have the time to do it. We're willing to help coordinate that, whatever it takes to get it going.
With the technology we have these days, just having brainstorming sessions via Zoom or whatever, it's a lot easier to get together and just talk about things.
Yeah. And those are wonderful tools just to spread the word and talk to everyone, get rid of the silos that way.
Yeah, Penny told me that today that there's too many silos and I said, and they're not all on farms.
True. We had several site selection opportunities come across our desk. So we work with any, any of them that come across.
So business calls and says, I am looking for somebody's in this, out of the county somewhere. I'm looking for a site for my business. That's the kind of calls she's talking about, site selection.
And I get them from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and other agencies as well. And we have a business, they may be out of state, they may be in state and they're just looking to expand. What do you have in your area to offer this business so they can come here? And so we work very closely with, with those groups. The hard part of that is, is I will get a site selection request today and it's due tomorrow. Or they'll send me one and I have three days to gather the information. So I've kind of made friends with a whole lot of people in the county in order to make.
Spoke with the county zoning administrator.
Several of them, depending on what they're looking for.
Oh, with the zoning administrator.
Yes, depending on what, depending on what the business is looking for.
Okay.
Who, you know, exactly.
We are zoned.
Yes, we have, like, we have, we have one, they need at least 60 acres and they need this and they need this and they need this. Or I will get one that says the, the ceiling, they want an existing building, but the ceiling height has to be X and it has to have floor space of Y. So trying to fit those pieces together, it doesn't always work, but we do have.
They want that information the next day.
Yeah.
Or three days from now even.
But, but we still have a few in operation, so I'm always a glass half full.
Now, have you, are you, when you get those requests, are you collaborating with the county planning?
Yes.
Good.
Yep. And then Phil wanted me to add on at the bottom about just continued education. I'm, I'm new to this position, new to the area, but they have created economic development courses for the state of Michigan and I'm participating in those, participating. I just finished a class on asset infrastructure management. Taking those types of trainings to make sure that I'm giving and hunting down the most accurate information possible.
We, we are really glad that Penny, as a director, and to have her interested in learning more about how to be effective and more effective as an economic development director and there's a certification program in which she's pursuing that certification program that wants. And so it's, it's beneficial to the county because it just brings more resource and more knowledge to the county and we're glad for that.
There are lots of other things that we've been working on on the side, but these are the highlights. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I apologize for being late.
I have one question. Madam Chairman, my ask question. Of, you said something about the expo and I'm sorry, but I didn't catch all what you're saying about the business expo.
Chamber of Commerce has a business expo annually and we participated with that. And working with the chamber, they allowed us to be able to go around. We, we had our, our own booth, but then we also went around to each and every table to introduce ourselves and share with them the programs that we have.
Well, that was nice because you do have a lot of good programs. I know you all work very hard. And I'm personally glad you're here.
Thank you.
I can't say enough positive about the board. Oh.
We appreciate Jenny serving.
A lot of ideas and brainstorming and
Very important.
These have a wide variety of community members and came a long ways.
Yep.
Very long ways. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
I just said one thing.
Sorry.
That sits on a planning, zoning planning commission or zoning minister, the second one back. And then Dan Dunlaw, right here is also a planning commission meeting member. Let me just extend it out.
Yeah.
Next meeting, come and talk to us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Come and talk to us because we're getting businesses through that want to come. But they already picked out a spot by the time they come see us.
What the ones, the calls that I get, usually businesses aren't willing to talk yet. They have like a scout out there. It's just gathering information, so.
Most businesses are competitive to one extent or the other, so.
Yeah, I, I had a couple, well, one this week and one a couple of months ago. They were so excited to come to, to West Branch. And both of them, West Branch, Iowa is.
Item, item three B, Kendall, DHT, certainly help educator, come on up. Hi, hi, good evening. Scott is, hi.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having us. We, we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak in front of the commissioners. It's, it's an honor. So Kendall is handing out.
The first page is the proposal basically that will be sending into the state if you guys approve the small grant.
Thank you.
So basically what this is for, have, have you guys heard of the, like, the medical marijuana grant that we have done before?
Yes.
Yes. So basically this is our four, or this would be the fifth year that we are doing it and the Ogama County has gotten $6,000, $6,120 for the year 2023 for the Medical Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Act. Basically what we, what we would do with this money or what we've done with this money in the past and what we will do with this money is we will purchase these lock boxes and we will also provide education in these lock boxes. So this is a lock box from last year. Basically what it is, is like, it's all of the, these materials. We have a couple of materials from the Health Department of programs that we run. And just a couple other education materials. And then they fill out this form and it basically says how many children and how many adults in the household. Basically how many people were reaching every lock box that we give out, if that makes sense. So we kind of try to keep track of that. And basically what the lock boxes are for is so people can lock up, not just their marijuana, but this is also one of the flyers that we give out for these lock boxes on the third page. So this said, do you have, do you have medications, medical, medical or recreational marijuana or other harmful substances that are easily accessible by kids in your home? So it's not just for marijuana, if that makes sense. It's for everything. So it could be for everything. And it's basically to keep your kids and dogs away from it or anybody who shouldn't be getting in your stuff. And then the other piece of it is obviously the education, getting the education out to everybody about yes, marijuana is legal, but it does still have the harms and there is still secondhand marijuana. There are still harms for people who are pregnant and smoking marijuana, et cetera, et cetera. Also with this education, we attend a lot of community events, so we bring all these, we bring this education as well. And, and basically anybody who asks, we have information to give them. And then the last part of it is the billboards that we put up. And I kind of want to explain, it's a little bit, it's kind of hard to explain. So it's county money. And what it is, is how they came up with the $6,120 is based off of the, the amount of medical marijuana licenses in the county. So this year there was 159 licensed, I, I mean, last year, there was 159 licenses. Oops, sorry. So it was 159 licenses and 104 of those were actually new and 55 where we knew. I believe we got a little bit more than this amount last time.
Now, when you say a license, you mean a user's bike?
Yes.
Out of sellers.
A medical marijuana card.
Yes, a medical marijuana, yes. So that's why, that's where they come up with the 6,120. And basically what District Health Department Two does or has done in the past is it's for the county, for everybody in the community. But we take the funds because we have the tools and resources to, you know, get these lock boxes, do the education, put up the billboards instead of you guys having to do it for yourselves. Does that make sense? So, and then I wrote here, so DHT Two will also be handling all of the responsibilities. I've kind of just said that, such as the billboards, advertising logistics, education and ordering the lock boxes, but also we will be handling the financial status reports for the county that are going to be due on July 17th of 2023 and September 15th of 2023. I didn't put this in the guys' little packet. Sorry, this was just for me to tell you guys. So that is two things. Last year we had three due, so I don't know, they changed it to two this year. And then we will also be submitting, you know, keeping them up to date on making sure that we're spending the funds right and how they are supposed to, making sure we're not going over budget, stuff like that. So we'll be sending them all the reports. However, you guys will still be in the loop getting, I believe it would be Tim, he would be getting the just like whenever we send a FSR, the financial status report, they would be sent, the state would also send it to Tim as well. So you guys are still in the loop and making sure that we're spending the funds properly. So it's kind of assisting you guys, so you guys don't have to do it yourselves. And these are, like I said, what the lock boxes look like, except this year, so we could get a few more. Also, these were out of stock. We just got a little bit smaller, so I think they're going to be like like, like that, so just a little smaller. So those just at the health department, people just coming and picking them up? Is that how you give them out? Yep, they're at the health department. And then also we have this program through the health department also called Points of Hope. And it's like a syringe service access program. So those people that are specifically getting counseled through this obviously get offered the lock boxes and whatnot. So through all, in all of our home health programs too, we're always constantly offering those and giving them education.
So from us, you just need a resolution for this grant?
Uh, yeah, basically I just need your guys' signature.
And do you hear that?
Right, this is something we've done for the last couple of years too, so it's relatively routine. So if you agree to do that, we'll just bring it to the next meeting next week and it'll be ready to go.
Absolutely. You guys, yes?
Definitely.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
What was your name again?
Scott is.
Izzy Zio.
That's correct.
Item D, we have Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Ryan Veder planting and zoning. Come on up, Branch. One zoning mapping amendment, three dash two. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm skipping me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already crushed you out. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll be here all night.
Yes, I'm skipping you. These guys, a couple of you have to leave right at 5:45. Yes. Are you?
So real quickly, I have three items for you. One is a map amendment, a map amendment for a parcel over here on M30 being rezoned from business to residential. Property owner like, can rent the building out as a commercial building, would like to turn it into multi-housing. Township was on board. They're okay with it. Planning Commission passed it in our last meeting. Now it's okay, folks.
Where was I? I had to go.
It's over here in M30. It's almost directly across from Columbus Street, right across the street from the Mexico Columbus home.
Okay. I believe the, right next to the big barn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first commitment south after the residential that is on that, on that west side of 30 in Ogama Township.
Yep.
So if you change that from business to residential, it doesn't change anything else around it or?
Nope, just going to change that one parcel. The majority of the property behind it, which I believe is actually owned by the property owner is, is farmland. I believe its zone is R1. There's other homes up here on M30 on that side of the road that are actually in a business district as well too.
If it goes residential in the future, can it go back to business?
If in fact he wanted to petition or turn it back to business, he could possibly. Obviously it would have to be approved by the township and by planning commissioning yourselves, but.
Is there any con to this?
Not that I believe.
Are you talking, are you talking right directly across from Columbus Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was where Dr. Hall had his.
It looks very big.
It, it's not very big. The parcel's not very big, but there would be plenty of room there if he did want to make it bigger.
The A-frame is.
That's the, yes, sitting there, yeah. So potentially it looks as he's talking maybe two or three apartments or two or three. Living.
In the city, the city's looking big.
Just outside of that.
Just to the west of that, right up in the field.
Does he plan on building more there? Or just turning that existing?
Turning that existing and maybe expanding it a little bit.
So he does plan on expanding then?
Yeah.
But you could do a duplex and. If you wanted to go or try or.
If you wanted to go to a tri, it'd have to add to the existing footprint, which he would have plenty of room there to do a zoning requirement.
Any, any questions?
I'm sorry to hear that.
I believe, I believe it's, I want to say it's an acre. It might be two acres. It looks a little small to be an acre. So it might be closer to two. No, it's actually one acre.
Questions, Congressman?
Well, I said on the, yeah, but there are so many, there are so many commercial, empty commercial in around the immediate area of the city, you know, whether in the township or out of the township. Trying to get commercials to, to rent. We just changed one in Mills Township.
Right, that's what.
Prior month for the same reason.
Do you pursue this, do you pursue this property, this individual maintaining this?
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's right in, okay, that was my question.
It's right in, okay, that was my question.
Yeah, there's no.
Yes, multiple.
Okay.
Multiple residentials.
Look at me like that.
I was gonna show you.
Oh, Commissioner Saver. Oh, Commissioner Saver.
I think it's great. I mean, obviously, the adjacent properties are already residential to it. Um, it's gonna provide some more housing, which this area definitely needs badly, if some affordable housing, so I think it's a win-win.
Commissioner Vaughn?
I'm with Mr. Sabre. We need the housing, so I see no downfall.
Ms. Simmons?
Um, I address uh, Mr. Scott.
Please.
It's, you're on the planning committee. Have, have they already approved behind, by the brook, which is not too far from this property? For a builder to build low-cost housing there. Be, by the, by the, my understanding.
Development did it, that didn't really come. Because the city acquired, the city acquired property.
City has a property.
Basically, city property and they do their own zoning.
I, I think they're looking at um, either four twenty-fiving the property into the city or coming up with an agreement with the township.
They already have, so that would actually be city property. It is a four twenty-five, it is city, it'll be, become city property, just, just like the water well. That's up there right now, that's the city.
Right. I, I know a city property, but I thought it wa- had already been approved, I guess I'm mistaken. Um.
It was approved through the city.
That, okay, then I would talk to the city about that, yeah. But I think their plan is to have a contractor put. Low-cost housing up in, up in that area, which is not too far from this piece of property right here, so.
Right, it is.
And we need housing terribly.
Tim, did you hear that? We'll have that on for resolution.
Yeah, I got it. Thanks.
Item two, planning commission appointments.
And the other two items I have for you, I've got two reappointments to both the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. Um, two members for the planning commission, Scott Bell and Rob Reed. Um, Scott Bell's been on the planning commission for at least ten years. Um, Rob is currently, I believe in his mid-year. Rob also is the. Parent supervisor for Hill Township and he's also served on his own board of appeals. On the ZBA side, reappointments, Joe Peterson. Joe has been on the ZBA for thirty years. Um, Steve Brenner has been on there for, I think at least ten. He's also a township trustee. And they're wanting to stay on. And they're wanting to stay on, so. Um, a lot of good experience between all four of them. As far as I know, we don't have anybody on a waiting list looking to get on any of these boards.
Nobody's approached you on?
Nobody's approached me and I don't believe Tim has received anything from the online. There is a. Application online, I believe.
There is, we, we've received nothing.
Um, when is, because we have, uh, we start January, new commissioners come out, when is, when, when is the meetings for this?
For, for your approval or?
No, no, for you guys' board.
Planning, uh, planning commission won't meet again until January. Zoning Board of Appeals, we're probably looking at February. Um, that's more of a case, case basis when we have a variance or something.
Your zoning is monthly crack?
Correct. There are evening meetings, all are at seven o'clock. ZBA is usually the first Wednesday of the month, planning is usually the fourth Wednesday of the month. As necessary, so. GBA meets probably less than, than the planning commission does.
How long have you served on the board, Commissioner Scott?
Four years now.
Perfect, thank you. Is that all right?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For a discussion items, economic development corporation appointments, yes?
Brendan, were you on it?
I'm sorry, what?
Were you on a planning commission?
No, I wasn't.
My first term, we're on it then, weren't you?
No, I was never on the planning commission.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Economic, I do, you guys want to address this, development corporation appointments?
Yes.
It's right here.
Somebody's up for reappointment.
Yes, it's your term, I mean, December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
That's correct.
Yes, and she's.
We'd like to ask that she would be appointed.
She's an asset, she represents Mills Township.
Yes.
And she does a very good job. She's a secretary as well.
Yes.
So she wants to continue, correct?
That's correct.
Absolutely, thank you. Item four B, correctional facility dryer. Tim?
So we put on an RFP to replace a dryer over at the correctional facility, a dryer that met an unfortunate end a few weeks ago. Uh, we did not receive any reply to the RFP, but we did receive a quote from Universal Laundry Machine. For the Unimac UT seventy-five. Um, quote, uh, I did load onto your iPads here tonight. That will about fifteen minutes before the meeting started, that quote was eight thousand three thirty-one. I'm gonna recommend you accept that quote, uh, for no other reason than this is the exact model, the exact uh, vendor that provided the dryers. That are currently in the facility and that's important because we know the dryer will fit in the space allotted and the. Uh, hookups are where they need to be, like the exhaust and so on. We don't need to do anything other than hook up to the. Uh, system that we already have. Uh, so given there were no, there was no other interest and given the uh. You know, sole sourcing of the nature of that particular piece of equipment, I would recommend that we accept that quote.
I had a question about that, uh, when we got notice of that, it said something about vegetable oil and a towel that started this on fire with, was that intentional?
No, no, they cleaned it.
I didn't know, it didn't give any detail, I did.
Spill in the kitchen, I believe.
Okay, and it didn't go through the washer first?
Well, I think they washed it all out and they run it through the washer and then threw it in the dryer and it's still ignited. Correct.
Oh, okay, I, it was a, it was a very brief.
Yeah, I guess on the box, I guess on the box there's even a uh, caution. Yes, about that.
What, vegetable oil?
Yep, so protocol over there has been changed from what I've heard.
Vegetable oil towel, Brenda.
Two regs.
No more chicken.
They had fish oil on. That were washed.
Had what?
Fish boil.
Yeah, yeah. And it's got a three-year warranty? Right, Tim?
That's what I remember, I'll, I'll double check it, but I, I remembered like three years.
Okay, well, we don't have a choice. We have to have a dryer, right?
Pretty quick. Yes, we do.
And there was no other damage besides a dryer?
Correct.
Perfect, okay. You guys good with that?
Definitely.
Got dried.
Coming out commissary, right, Tim?
That, that's where it'll be and we'll talk more about that uh, at a future meeting about how we proceed.
Okay, thank you. Item four C, West Branch Airport Agreement.
Uh, Jenny, could I direct you back to three C? Uh, we don't want to overlook the, the clerk's request.
Oh, she, she was okay with us moving on?
Back to it.
Oh, okay, cause we're all here, so. Okay, go ahead, and I'm sorry, right, go ahead.
So, one of my employees is going out. Uh, right now, it is gonna be the first, second week in January for an ex. Short-term extended period of time on family leave, so um, I want to take the. Four other full-time people up to forty hours, so I'm asking if we can do an additional ten hours per pay period. Um, the one who's gonna be out does not have enough time to be paid the whole time. Um, so. We're s- we're s- at the end of it, we're still gonna be coming out ahead. Um, we'll still save with them going up, we'll still save like two hundred and sixty-five dollars a week. If they can go up. Short-term. Six to eight weeks.
So she's gonna be off six to eight weeks, it's not intermittent, that's consistent?
Correct.
Commissioners, Commissioner Saver.
I'm aware of the situation and I've talked. Rick, they definitely need the time and.
It's our family court clerk who, the others are gonna have to fill in, I'm gonna have to fill in. She's first on the phone, first to in, or first to the window. The workload on everybody else is gonna be.
Commissioner Scott?
We did this, what, a year or so ago?
Different times.
Has a sunset on it, I don't have a problem with it, yeah.
Commissioner Vaughn?
I'm good with it, I understand the circumstances.
Commissioner Newbaker?
So, we're talking ten hours per pay period.
Forty hours, so not working overtime.
Forty hours, so when you say four pay periods. Is that truly?
Well, this is just, this is just an exit, cause we don't know, depending on what happens, we don't know how long she's gonna be out.
You gave us the worst case scenario.
Yes.
That's, that's per person, how much it will cost for four pay periods.
Correct.
With that increase.
Correct. And then on the bottom, you see the off four weeks unpaid, that's.
A comparison.
That difference there, the two thousand is what we're still gonna be ahead.
Commissioner, or, Mr. Simmons?
You said that we, you would be ahead, you're still gonna have to pay the person that's off, right?
Only for the time she has, she does not have enough time.
Well, she's got a hundred and twenty-six hours, so the only thing you've got is like thirteen hours there. Difference. Fourteen hours, pardon me.
She has enough time to be paid for four weeks, she potentially could be out for eight weeks. So there's.
So you're, you're just putting this in just in case?
Just, yes, yeah.
All right, so if she comes back to work, the extra ten hours per person's out the window, right?
No. From the day she goes out, I want them up to forty.
Right, but when she comes back.
Then they're gonna go back. Yeah.
Tim, is there any issues with this, with, with union?
Uh, there wouldn't be in this case because each of the individuals involved is a union member, so the union continues to have all the work.
And I'm not the one part-time person, I'm not, she's staying part-time, she's not getting raised up.
So this four pay periods, this thirty-two, thirty-one, is that for four pay periods or two pay periods?
That's for four.
So if it's two pay periods, she'll only go on for four weeks, then it'll be half of that.
Cost to have.
That's where I'm confused at, is, is that four weeks or is that? I think, I think what you're meaning there is four weeks.
Says four pay periods.
Top, it says four pay periods.
See where it says, right up, right at the very top.
That's supposed to be four weeks. Yeah, I had her adjust it at the, I had her add stuff and.
That's what confused me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Four weeks? Not four pay periods?
The employee that's going out is going to get paid for four weeks. I want to add ten extra hours to each pay period.
Per person.
Per person, right. It'll be four pay periods total. Eight weeks for pay periods.
So, but for the first four weeks, we're gonna be over budget.
Correct, and then it's gonna adjust. Yes, yes.
After that.
Then we'll be.
I, I'm so confused here.
I don't wanna say that.
In your ten hours.
Saving money, we'll be saving money.
Five hours a person per week, right?
Correct.
You, you won't be saving money, you'll be back to budget.
Right, correct, wow, correct.
Depending on the payroll differences.
Do you have a, is your budget able to do, to do this, when you have the funds?
Yeah, we're good. All right.
Right, you know where it's coming from or?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, are you guys okay with that? He wasn't sitting up here when I got here.
Well, we asked him, he wouldn't, he didn't want to.
Yeah, I, I am, come on over here and sit.
He's gonna give my spot in about thirty seconds.
Tim, you got the, Tim's got the floor.
Uh, this is an agreement, I think we talked about, uh, about two or three months ago and we finally are getting it done, uh, resolved in writing. Uh, this is an agreement that would allow the county to process the payroll for the airport manager. Uh, I believe that's the only employee that we have at the airport and the, the airport board and I tend to agree felt that this would be a more efficient way of. Of dealing with the payroll situation, but what it also does to the extent the carriers will allow is, uh, allow the airport manager to. Participate in things like our health insurance pool and, and so forth. Um, the only open question on the draft agreement, uh, you'll see is in section nine where it talks about compensation. And we left blank what the authority would pay to the county. In this case, the attorney has written up a per month, I would suggest that you insert one dollar per year in there. Uh, because frankly, once the name is entered and the benefits are uh, lined up. But there really isn't much more to do. I mean, it becomes more of a management of just pushing the, the send button to make the payments. Uh, that are necessary after that, so there really isn't a lot of extra work anybody's gonna need to do beyond the initial enrollments and what have you. Uh, otherwise, the agreement has been in front of, uh, the airport manager and I believe the airport board as well. And now it's, uh, finally here for final approval.
I wanted to ask, I know you're getting ready to go, uh, Commissioner Vaughn and you're leaving as well. Next week, next Thursday is the meeting, I um, will not be here and I kind of wanted to be here for you guys' last meeting. Eh, how do you guys feel about moving that to Wednesday?
I'd have to look.
I mean, I don't have to be, but.
I'd have to look at my schedule, I don't.
Is there another night next week?
I was gonna say, we had to postpone EMS, so I'm meeting with EMS at four thirty next Wednesday and then I've got a township meeting after that.
So, Wednesday.
Twenty-first.
I can't, what time, my schedule, there are so many sick people right now. Does Tuesday work? If not, we don't have to. As of right now, I'm going, but right now, it's, the snow out there is really bad. My brother, my dad's been back in South Dakota for two days.
Tuesday? Saying Tuesday, I can't.
Okay, you can keep it the same.
I've got a meeting. Say goodnight now. Say goodbye tonight.
Okay, bye.
Goodbye.
I go back to that.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on with this, we're just bringing this. So, Tim, this, this is not changing their current compensation? You can come up, Mr. Rossi.
I'm fine.
Uh, no, it's not changing any of their compensation and we would be, uh. Really not even involved in the compensation at all. The airport authority would actually be sending those funds over to the county. Uh, for the compensation, so reimbursing or paying in advance over, yeah, we ultimately work that out. But because they're an authority, they would end up paying for whatever wages and benefits are involved. This one dollar is just sort of our administration fee.
Okay, questions? You're on this, who's on this board? You are?
Brad.
Commissioner Newbaker?
Good night.
You have something?
No, no, we're fine, but I'm gonna have an agreement with that.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, w- we all, uh, brought it to, brought it to the commission a few months ago. The attorney that had to go through it, he's the one came up with that little compensation line. The way I explained it to the rest of the airport board, it was just a services fee, it'd probably be a dollar a month, but. About with, uh, Tim, a dollar a year. It's gotta be a dollar.
Just, just a pass through, there would, the county's just cutting the check.
Paying for this.
Yes.
Passing through the county.
Yes.
No problem, so.
Yeah, any cost that the, the airport authority board is paying.
Perfect, thank you. Wonder, uh, item D, time clock procedures policy.
This policy is one that, uh, we, um, ask the attorney to draw up after conversations over the last several meetings. This is truly, um, sort of like a starting point slash boiler, holy type language. Uh, that's been presented and I've tweaked it to reflect what our current practices are. For instance, in item number four. Where we talk about compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, we're using the seven and a half minute rule that's actually in that federal law. Meaning employees who check in within seven and a half minutes of a start or end time. The time will actually clock them out exactly at four thirty or eight thirty or whatever the time might be. If they clock in eight minutes early, then it's gonna pre. Uh, pre-punch for it, so it'll come out, it's, uh, so if we're starting at eight thirty, it would say eighteen fifteen. Uh, I think that we've been through this ad nauseam with department heads and with the employees and they, they realize. Uh, what that seven and a half minute rule is and everybody's pretty well, uh, compliant with it. We occasionally have somebody who forgets to clock in or whatever and we, we're able to fix that administratively. Uh, there's language in here about, uh. Where you take your break times and so on, um, and, and I understand that may have caused some conversation in the building, uh, this past week. Again, it's intended to reflect what currently is happening. Uh, so if you are, um, taking a lunch break, you are free to go wherever you want to go. To, for your hour lunch break. Uh, so if you are um, taking a lunch break, you are free to go wherever you wanna go to for your hour lunch break. Uh, for the fifteen minute break times, there really isn't anywhere you can go in fifteen minutes, so we've tried to reflect that in this policy as well. And just two other points, uh, number one, you'll see a a statement at the bottom of the uh, policy about uh, our elected uh, co-employers. And these employees of those offices are advised to contact their immediate supervisors in those offices uh, for compliance, and also I would point out that uh, some of our collective bargaining agreements already address these issues, for instance, the steelworkers uh, contract has specific language in there about clocking in at the time clock and so on. Uh, that language obviously would supersede anything we do through policy, although the policy's intended to reflect what's happening in there. Uh, so that's that's the nutshell version of this, and I know for the board, this is the first time you're seeing it. You may or may not want to advance it to the next meeting uh, for approval. Uh, but that's that's totally your call, if you're comfortable with it, you can. Uh, once you've uh, come to terms with what you wanna see in this policy, I do intend to circulate it among our unions too for any input they might have. Uh, but otherwise, I I hope it reflects what we're doing now and everybody is comfortable with it.
I I guess why, why in C does it say that uh, is that, is item C, is that necessary, employees in the following department should ask their immediate supervisors if their policy applies to them?
It is because recall, these offices are countywide elected, they're co-employers with the board. And these offices uh, really have the authority to determine the administrative rules for how their offices will function.
Well, then, will you bring that back to us and and I I mean, I think it's information I wanna know as far as who's not following this policy.
I could certainly do that, and I've done this in the past with some other policies, for instance, when we passed the uh, uh, harassment in the workplace policy, uh, some departments did tweak that a little bit, uh, as far as you know, what they're doing within their departments. So uh, I think that's the precedent is set, I'm very comfortable doing that.
Um, my other question on this. At the department head meeting that you recently had, um, correct, you recently had a department head meeting?
Well, we would have had one Monday, but one of us kinda came down with the whole COVID thing, so it didn't happen.
Okay, so has the department had seen this policy?
I I don't believe so, other than it's been, you know, posted for a few days on the uh, agenda for for tonight's meeting, but uh, I don't believe it's been circulated otherwise.
This is what our legal team re- recommended?
It is, uh, and again, the the attorney was very clear that this was boilerplate, that uh, we would need to tweak it, which I've done hopefully. Uh, but yes, that's it's actually what the attorney came up with.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sir.
I don't have a problem with the policy, but I also don't have a problem if you wanna delay it until a new board comes in and have everybody take a good look at it. Let the department heads take a look at it, you know, get their input on what's on paper right now, and then, you know, let it come to the new board and let the new board make a decision on it.
I agree. Commissioner Scott?
Well, it's, may not got circulated, but boy, people around here know about it, I got, I came in the other day on Wednesday and I got hit by half dozen different people in two different buildings about it, so uh, but it is boilerplate, I just, I don't get why.
Why, I guess, what, can you fill us in?
Well, the the big, the big thing I heard is do I have to sit at my desk, take a break?
That's what I want clarification on number eight, because what is the, Tim, what what is the assigned work area? Because I don't want any of my employees taking their break at their assigned work area, which is their desk.
Why does, yeah, that shouldn't be in there, why does it say in the assigned work area? Their break is their break.
It's a signed break area. Um, or on the property.
You're gonna have, you have something that might go to the break room, someone will go outside and smoke, maybe they wanna run over to Dairy Queen and grab something in the summertime. Fifteen minutes is adequate time to probably do that, I mean, let's be reasonable.
When you're on break, you're still being paid.
True.
So that doesn't mean you have the right to leave the property. If you're not being paid, if you're being paid. Um, and that's gotta be established in that policy.
If you leave the premises, you have to clock out.
Exactly.
Oh, so that should say that, or does it? I I haven't looked this over very well.
I would definitely not advise to say that they can take their break in their work area. That nor, uh, that can lead. Well, it depends on what you want to define it as.
As I say, it's the interpretation, what's the interpretation? Work area.
First of all.
Well, I can do my own, I'm completely okay with it, but I want to know if the assigned work area is county property. Uh, if it is, I'm completely fine with it, if not, then I will try do my own if that doesn't get changed and change it too.
Or you could blanket statement that so that the department head or elected official uh, designates um, their break area. That way you can just.
Steelworker contract, they can break down, what's the smallest breakdown, Tim, on time off, an hour, half hour?
Half hour.
Um, you you mean like sick time or something like that?
Yeah, it was they could break personal time down to.
Believe we took that down to thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, yeah, so if they gotta take a break any longer, fifteen minutes, they can just take, I'm off for half an hour.
They could.
You know, that's in the union contract.
Well, I I gotta go, but um, the only thing I'll say about it is uh, I I really wish that um, the rest of the elected officials would get together and come to a conclusion of um, why they don't want their people um, clocking in. Um, because I I don't understand why we wouldn't wanna be very inclusive in this policy as to the the standardization of our our payroll system. I don't know why they would not wanna do that. Um, and there's definitely uh, the technology's there to allow people to to clock in wherever they're at, depending on when when their department head wants them to clock in and where they want them to clock in at. I I don't see that as being uh, something that holds us back. And if we don't uh, uh, I don't feel that this policy's gonna be worth the paper it's written on, if you don't get everybody included into it.
I agree.
So I don't think you should even even develop it until they look at it and come to a conclusion.
That was part of the, that software got sold to us, that was the, oh, this was part of the selling point for that software, the software that we purchased. Can do all of this, so why are we not maximizing this?
Good question.
I can tell you the issue that we hear about would be solved if they would use this program.
And I keep hearing people tell me, well, this is the way we've always done. We don't have to anymore, we have a challenge.
We can track it, we got checks and balances, we, I mean, come on.
I love this program.
Well, saves time for Tracy, it's all about efficiency.
Efficiency and accountability.
Until everybody gets a hundred percent on board with it, it's it's not saving as much time as it could be saving.
Correct.
Yes.
If I was a supervisor and I wanted to investigate something, I surely would want something that was transparent enough for me to do that, right?
Well, prime example, I did, and I knew I found what I wanted to find, and I corrected the issue. Why?
Right. Alright, I'll see you.
Good evening, Mr. Becker. Have fun.
Hey, Madam Chairman.
So, so uh, Tim, when's your next department head meeting?
Uh, second week of, second Monday rather of January, I, off the top of my head, I don't know what that date is. But I will certainly circulate this, um, following your discussion tonight, circulated among departments and may as well hit the unions at the same time and get their input on any other uh, language issues they might have. Yeah, I think they, number eight is easily corrected, whether it says county property or or whatever, I mean, it wasn't intended to tie anybody to their desk, for instance, that that wasn't the intent at all, so I think that's easily fixed.
It's just verbiage. Did you have something?
Yeah, can you tell me what um, applies to all non-exempt hourly, what's a non-exempt salary employee and what's a non-exempt hourly employee?
Which which number, where are you looking at?
I'm looking at B, one and four.
B, one and four, Tim, can you explain?
I can, this is language tied directly to the Fair Labor Standards Act, which breaks employees into exempt or non-exempt. And what that means is if you're non-exempt, uh, those employees are qualified for a time and a half a- after forty hours per week. Or an exempt employee such as myself, at no time would ever be eligible for overtime. Uh, so there's a certain test that's actually in the statute itself that you can evaluate each position against, it has to do with management responsibilities, confidentiality and so on. And here we're talking, we're breaking it down further into those who are hourly and those who are rather full-time and those who are part-time. Yes, it is possible to have a part-time exempt employee who's who's on salary. Doesn't happen very often, and I don't believe we have any within our system. Uh, but certainly the full-time, we do have exempt and non-exempt, and that's why we're clarifying who who this policy been applied to.
So, the exempt um, salary employees would be like what, the elected officials?
Actually, they're in a completely different category as elected officials, but uh, for exempt, that would be positions such as my own, uh, as county administrator. You, the equalization director is exempt uh, as well. Uh, we think there there's there's a handful.
Okay, I got it.
President's Director, right.
I got it.
So, uh, yeah, Brenda, this this whole um, uh, let's say policy procedure started last January, and they kinda went uh, from, just to give you guys an update, I'm sorry, you was both Mr. Rossi, they started uh, departments initiated this like one at a time, it seemed like what, every three months?
They were actually unions, each, our union was the first, lower floor was the first. We started it to test it, to work out the bugs, and now we're all.
They ruled out in phases.
Yeah.
Correct, and we were getting intermittent updates. And 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 I was under the understanding, everybody was doing this. We're talking about hourly employees.
Right.
It was brought to one of our um, commissioners, uh, I don't remember exactly how it all came about, but then we we've we learned that not all of them were uh, utilizing it. Um, and and we are asking why and, you know, what?
Okay.
What's the rationale behind it? Um, you know, uh, it's it's pretty easily accessible, you could do it on your phone, we can set radiuses, some people start from home. Um,
How do you punch in from home, and how do you know you're even working?
Correct, on your phone, um, so. Does some of them take their vehicles home? Um, but there's there's a computer, I believe, in the vehicles now, I mean, it's all, i- it's it's all pretty simple, simplified.
There's an app on your phone.
GPS wise?
Pardon me?
Can you find vehicles now GPS wise?
We will be able to.
Have that technology, we just passed last meeting, um, yes, so that's been passed and and that's all gonna be part of this, but now we're just trying to figure out the barriers of why um, why we would not utilize this.
Right.
Um, because I don't wanna misspeak, but but like the the corrections department, um, that there's a time clock there that they're not utilizing, they're still writing down when they walk in the building and when they walk out.
So who, how is this tracked, from where, what location is this tracked from?
The clerk's office. Is the ultimate.
Tracy does it.
Um, well, actually, it's um, through the program, if somebody clocks in anywhere, uh, the program is based in the cloud. So it's uh, whatever coordinates are where you're clocking in, it will pinpoint that on the map for you, so you can see where that clock in occurred.
Yeah, somebody brought that to our attention, they were, they were not where they were supposed to be when they clocked in, correct?
They were clocking in the parking lot.
Yes. So you you can track all of that.
And and the person that tracks that is who?
Each, well, I I am in control of my employees.
I see, okay.
Which is fine, that's their job, I mean, that's. I mean, that's.
I just wondered how, how, how it works.
Away from them, absolutely not, I, that's their job, but um, Tim showed me one day when I was seeing his office, like you could, he has the whole uh, screen he had up of I I don't know if you're showing me, somebody was late, I don't recall exactly, Tim, but I mean, what you can see is is uh, uh, pretty fascinating.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, do you wanna add to that?
I was just gonna add, what you were seeing was was my dashboard, and I can see if there are requests out there for vacation or sick time, I could see how many I've approved. I actually have a calendar that pops up, so I can scroll over a specific date and see who's already scheduled for time off on those dates. Uh, and this is just scratching the surface, I sat through a webinar a few weeks ago with uh, Nova Time. Uh, just to get into some some of the reporting capabilities that come out of the program, it is fantastic, I wish I had more time to you know, really play with it, uh, danger in that is that I start creating reports nobody ever wants, but you know, bottom line is just about anything we wanna see, we can see, and it's all just, as soon as you punched in, it's all recorded, whether it's a time off, whether it's uh, I'm clocking in, lunch break or whatever it is. Uh, and it's very easy to track, and one of the big sales points to me is the way we have this set up. Uh, we will, we would have to work very hard to violate the Fair Labor Standards Act and miss paying somebody overtime with the system. It catches like. Exactly, and we as an organization uh, have the the confidence that our reporting is correct, so if we ever do go through an audit through wage in our division, we can state with absolute confidence that we've complied with, particularly the overtime rules, and make sure our employees were paid what they were, what they earned.
The comp times on there as well, correct?
It is, yes.
Because our auditor last year looked at some comp times and and some of them were off. So you know, this again, just comes back to.
We had one department tracking their comp time in a notebook.
Yes.
In their department.
And we have one department that refused to show their comp time.
Right.
So to the auditor.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So this is.
I like this program already.
This right here, I can go in and I can, like, this employee. Um, this tells me where she clocked in from, if they clock in from the parking lot, this is how I found we had an issue, somebody was clocking in from the parking lot. And getting here a couple of minutes late. Well, I can tell where they clock in from. What time they clock in, where they clock out, it tells me a lot of information, very helpful information.
And it might even be, you know, their lack of knowledge of where they were supposed to be clocking in, so you know, it is what it is, but it's caught, and and I think that this policy, again, I was under the understanding that maybe I misunderstood that everybody was already using this. But then when we started questioning some things. No, um, and and there's one other department that's not using it, so uh.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Anything further, so I I, in my opinion, I would like to the, I would like to just continue conversation, keep this on our committee at the whole until the new commissioners are on board and we can all have eyes on this.
They get feedback from the office department.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Amen.
And I think we'll have better uh, better uh, luck with that, I shouldn't say luck, results with them following this, if they have a voice in it, as they should have, the department heads and elected officials. Um, item E, DHHS appropriation. Yeah.
This is uh, something that, uh, similar to requests that we dealt with last year and understand there's there's more history even than that. Uh, DHHS would like to move three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars seventy cents from their appropriation from the county to their shut-off fund, the shut-off fund is used to assist uh, uh, people who have issues with utilities during the winter time and are are facing maybe a a shut-off notice. Uh, and obviously we'll need heat, and it's just another source of funding through DHHS that people can turn to and ask for uh, some assistance and hopefully avoid shut-offs.
If I can add to that, I sit on the DHHS board, um, what these ones are used for is after people have exhausted everything else that's available to them. They are very, very meticulous when they look at spending money out of those funds to make sure that those people have exhausted every available resource to them prior to dispersal of the funds out of this fund. I know Commissioner Scott and I had a little difference of opinion a year ago on this issue, but uh, I think, I think, well, they just, Craig wants the money back, I wanna see it get rolled over into their shut-off fund, so.
Talk about last year about about somehow making it so there wasn't money left over, so we could roll it over, wasn't, wasn't, didn't you take it back to them with that commissioners?
No, we took and we rolled it over last year.
I know we did, but there was conversation about.
The thing is, you don't know how much money's gonna actually get spent out of that fund until the end of the year. So, you know. And it's.
It's what, come on, you two.
I think it's a very, very worthwhile.
Absolutely.
That helps out people that are, whether you're, you're, it's an elderly person or somebody with children. If it's February and you've exhausted your sixteen hundred dollars worth of heat that the state of Michigan allocates you and you don't have a dime to your name. What are these people gonna do?
It's gonna.
They need the the funds and it's, and like I said, they're. They need the, the funds and it's, and like I said, they're very meticulous about who gets what. You know, they don't spend this money just to spend it.
You don't have to sell this to me. It's gonna be a very rough winter. People are really feeling, uh, financial strain right now.
There's my two cents.
Commissioner Scott, did you want to give your opinion? Did you have an opinion? You, didn't you used to serve on that board?
Which board?
We'll talk about that later. Okay, we'll have, we'll have. Did you have something? We'll have that on for resolution.
Yes, it will be on.
Item half administrative secretary position.
As you know, the Personnel Policy Committee and I interviewed some candidates for the Administrative Secretary Position. Uh, we did, um, uh, settle on one candidate, Kelly Darby, whose, um, application you had, uh, uh, on the iPads, uh, also, yeah, we've redacted the, the personal information, but you get a general idea of her background. Uh, she has asked for consideration of starting her at the one-year rate rather than the start rate. The difference is sixteen fifty-two at the start, seventeen seventy-three at the one-year rate. And she asked for that in recognition of her prior experience in, in office administration work. Uh, she has been primarily in the medical field, but, uh, looking at the background, looking at the programs that she's worked with and so on. Uh, we're definitely getting somebody who is not absolutely green to the position. Uh, and I think it's a reasonable request. Uh, she has been doing this kind of work since twenty fifteen, uh, which is, uh, where we at seven years ago now. Uh, so I, again, I think it's a reasonable request and I would recommend that, um, uh, we proceed on that. Uh, with that rate.
But she did accept the, the position at sixteen fifty-two, correct?
She accepted the position. I assured her that I would bring this request to you at this meeting, uh, for conversation.
Um, you two sat on the board, correct?
Yes, we did.
Interview. Can you tell us a little bit about the interview process or, or, you know, how she did as far as her interview?
Go ahead.
Um, well, we interviewed five or four on five.
Yes.
One didn't.
She was, uh.
She was exempt. Exemplary. Exemplary, I, my, in my opinion, uh, stood out, stood out, uh.
She was each one of the, she was number one with each one of us.
And.
By far above number two, in my opinion.
It fit my criteria, uh, a hundred percent. I mean, uh, there's certain things that, that I want in a person for this position and keep it, that every one of them. I, I, I don't have a problem. This is a non-union position. This is, um, uh, you know, this is at will. For the administrator. Um, you know, we're at this point because we want to share it with the rest of the commission, you know? But basically, you know, as, as Tim said, in, in the first, the first go-around, it's, it's personal work for him. Uh, we just, uh, expanded it with the Personnel Committee, but no, I, I, I would have no problem paying that at all.
I don't have an issue with it either. I think she's well worth it. From, she was excellent during the interview. She, again, met Craig's criteria, which he sets pretty high. Um, and there's nothing wrong with that. Don't get me wrong. I, I agree with ninety-five percent of Craig's criteria when it comes to somebody in this position. So I think, I think she's well worth it.
Mary's, Mary, she was gonna be hard to fill. She's, uh, she did a very good job.
So I thought Craig and I and Tim did a good job when we got married. So hopefully we did a good job with this one.
And, and we learned from that, this, this position is, this is not just a, a, a position in one of the offices around here. This, this takes a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that goes through Tim's office. It doesn't need to be transmitted too soon. And, uh, you know, she has almost no ties to the community, only, uh, 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 one family in the community. Uh, which is big for me. I mean, it's just totally no skin in the game. And the same thing having Tim or having the administrator. Tim's got no skin in his game here, you know? I mean, he, he doesn't, he's not related to half the county or any part of the county. He, he doesn't have, he doesn't have friends. He doesn't belong to anything here. It's a whole set of, different set of eyes and that's what I like.
Is this really a full-time position?
Yes.
Yes.
It is full-time position, yes. Okay.
We thought about that when, uh, we brought the position up and everything else and as, as Jenny said, with Mary, it, it proved to be a full-time position.
Full-time?
Yeah.
She was, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was, yeah.
Yeah, the one that was in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
He was.
Anything you asked of her, I mean, she and her, her.
She was on it right, right now.
Were unbelievable.
I already, I already know all that about, about her, believe me. I do. I know her.
Yes.
So.
It is nice to get updates, um, from the administrator or, or whoever their secretary is as far as what they have been working on. And also we know, right, especially for you guys coming in, and it is a new position, even to us, it's a new position. It is like, it's nice for us to get periodic updates as far as what they're working on, what they've done so that we can, we can sustain this position and prove that it's needed.
I mean, with Mary, I mean, I'm going in and ask her to do research on a certain thing and that's, that's what this position is. She serves, this person will serve the commissioners and the administrator. You want to know background on some?
Seventy-three an hour.
They're asked, she's asking for the, um, the one year to start at seventeen seventy-three, um, per hour. So we did do that with, uh, oh, I remember all that discussion. They're bringing, they're bringing it with the units, bringing them in at, at the wage scale of their years of experience.
We, yes, we did that with, with Sheriff's Office and.
To try to get more, uh, candidates and to look more presentable. Um, I know this individual, I don't know this individual person, but I know, uh, of her. And I know her.
Thank you, well.
Uh, is going to miss her very much. Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so, all right, how do you, how do you guys feel about the, I guess I can ask you guys as well, the seventeen seventy-three?
Do it.
The entry level is sixteen fifty-two, the one year is seventeen seventy-three an hour. Individual gets benefits, right? No benefits.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, I have none. I've said it's fine.
It's gonna affect you.
Oh, I mean, I think it's a, yeah, very important position. I don't know how you guys went as long as it without Tim alone. He has a lot on his plate, so he needs somebody that's gonna be there. Just don't think how he's operating without anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I, I wish, though, I, I agree with this. It's just would have been nice if, if, um, before she accepted the position, you know, it's just hard to give a raise when they accepted sixteen fifty-two.
Doesn't mean she. It doesn't, doesn't mean she can't back out though. You know?
You know, you, the thing is, we've always just matched the union contracts. We don't have to. You know, we can, uh, when it's non-union positions like that, we could set it any place we want. We always set the bar at the union level.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, as far as I'm concerned, when it's non-union, I've been very open about that is I, I'd much rather pay higher.
When they're not, because they're at will.
Yeah, because they're at will.
Okay. You guys good with that? Yes.
Yes.
Hey, does that have to move it on to resolution?
Yeah.
It does, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Item G, part caretaker agreement.
Okay, well, I said on the, on the right board, um, there, we had a sunset of, a sunset of a year with the, uh, RV, this is the RV P, uh, RV managers, it's husband and wife managers. Uh, teams, uh, we just, uh, we, we had to, we had the, uh, attorney look over the contract and, and make some tweaks and stuff like that. So it's basically their, their term is up and, you know, it's an annual thing. So it's coming to commissioners.
And you had, I was gonna ask this because I didn't see it ordinarily, which the county attorney reviews these, they got the little stamp. You know, approved as the content and form or whatever, and I didn't see that on this. So I want to make sure that they'd had the opportunity to, our county attorney had the opportunity to review the contract. So. I said, Tim?
Yeah, they, the attorney did review it and actually I think added about a page and a half, uh, from the original contract. And, and you'll see that mostly at the end, it's mostly, uh, indemnification language and things like that that was, uh, lacking from the other draft.
Because, you know, ordinarily at the bottom, he puts a little, you know, reviewed and approved as the form of content or whatever, and I didn't see it on this. So I made the assumption that he'd seen it, but I didn't want to assume it. So without asking.
This is annual, correct?
It is, and, and Commissioner Sarah Burke will make sure it's on there. You're right. It needs to be on there. That's our policy. Uh, so we'll make sure it gets on there.
All right. Just to cover ourselves.
Right. They are contractors. They are not employees. They are contractors. So. And that, and there is no compensation. They, they're able to live in the trailer that's on the grounds. And we do pay the utilities throughout the, throughout the winter, but that's the only compensation.
I know, I was on Parks and Recs. I do remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? To that?
No.
Commissioner Scott? Okay, uh, item five, public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Comment.
Huh?
I have a public comment.
Yes, Sam.
Um, four years, it has been going on since when I was commissioner last time. Has there been given, given any thought about hiring, uh, a secretary for the building department? My understanding is there's a significant amount of money in their coffers. So.
I, I can address that, uh, in this budget year. And actually, um, contemplated it last year, but in this budget year beginning in fiscal twenty-three, the building fund is contributing, uh, you know, let's say about, we put ten thousand dollars toward the secretary that MSU Extension uses in recognition of the fact that she is sort of their receptionist too over there in the annex building.
Yes, she is.
And gets, gets that process going. And the thought was, uh, we needed to be fair to Extension and charge them for the services they need. But here's one that, uh, uh, building, uh, department that was completely independent and they weren't kicking in. So we corrected that this year. So it's not, uh, a person that's assigned directly to the building department. She's kind of like the receptionist for the whole building itself. But we're able to make sure that, uh, the funding is fair, uh, to all the parties involved.
Well, my question is, is, is she just the greeter in the meter or she? Besides that?
Pretty much. And I would have to ask Brian if he's had her do anything else. May, maybe she takes in plans or something when they're out in the field. Um, you know, she obviously doesn't have any responsibility for reviewing those plans and approving anything, but certainly to receive those and get them to the right department, uh, to where they need to be. But, yeah, it's pretty much meeting and greeting. It's not a full-fledged secretary for the building department, although I don't know what else she might be doing for them. She might be doing copies for them or something like that.
She's on the call.
She's on the call.
Who's she?
Treasure Colleen.
Oh. Hi, Colleen. Uh, you're muted. Are you, I'm not sure if she's once.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, did you have something you wanted to add?
Um, well, I was just gonna say, yes, I do help building and zoning. I meet and greet. And when the people come in, I will help them fill out their applications if the guys aren't there and have them. Um, I give them, I give the plans to them when they come in.
Okay, sounds good.
I would like to do more.
Hi, Colleen. That'd probably be something that, that, that Brian should bring to us. Right? I mean, Tim, and then, then to us.
Well, if it impacts, if it impacts us dollar-wise.
Which it will.
Well, I mean.
They're looking and giving her more hours.
Let's.
That's something, conversation.
Why not?
That's conversation that she probably, yeah, okay.
You know, but that's something Brian needs to talk with Tim about.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Any other public comment on the phone?
Thanks, Colleen.
Yes.
Thanks, Colleen.
I don't think she's gonna talk today. Other public comment? Uh, Commissioner Surrick, it is. I am not there yet.
Oh, I forgot.
You can tell me how much you're gonna miss me. It has been a pleasure serving with you. Um, prior to this, I, I, I did not know you, but it's, it's been a pleasure. So I thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you worked very hard. Um, you have definitely been an asset to this board. You've brought different, uh, perspectives, which has been appreciated. And your expertise was appreciated. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm sure.
Don't tell me how much you're gonna miss me. I'm just kidding. Public comment.
And good luck with your fund.
I'm not sure I'm gonna go. There's snowed in right now in South Dakota, but it's bad out there. Can I, uh, have a media, a motion to adjourn at six twenty-five?
So moved.
Motion with support.
Support.
To adjourn at six twenty-five.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want support with that?
I support it.
So, yeah, my, my dad and my brother were out there.
They're in North Dakota?